All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 14th Board of Commissioners meeting. This evening, we have Mr. Jerry Cribb here, Reverend Jerry Cribb, for our invocation and pledge. Come on up this time, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thus remain standing for the invocation.
Oh, God, we gather to make decisions for our community and our county. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral, as we gather here to consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before this body, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and all its citizens. In our Lord's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make one change if I could. Under Old Business, Item A, I'd like to please remove that for this meeting, as the applicant has requested a little more time. So I'd like to ask that we take that off.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Board? All right, we have a motion for approval.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this evening, public comment. I don't have anyone signed up. Is there anybody out there that needs to talk about anything that didn't sign up for public comment? All right, seeing no one, I will close public comment. Next up, Commissioners' Report. This evening, I just want to take a minute to thank the Currituck Civic Association. I went over there last week and spent about two hours with them, talking about various projects going on around the county. It was a good meeting, and again, thank you for allowing me to come out. You'll notice where a couple Commissioners light this evening. Both of our etherages are gone. Ms. Kitty is off getting training this evening, and Owen is in the hospital this evening, so we certainly wish him a speedy recovery, and hopefully they get him straightened out. As we all know, he's had some issues for some time now, and so hopefully they get him figured out this time and get him back to us in one piece. Mr. Payment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple things. I'm the Commissioner assigned to the ABC Board, and one of the things the ABC Board does is appropriate funds and for programs for alcohol, substance abuse awareness and training. And for those in the school systems, might have seen, it was in the paper, one of the programs the ABC Board funded, and we're doing it on an annual basis, it was...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was a program where the students could come in on the Save a Life Tour. The ABC Board has sponsored that event annually, and the students get an opportunity to get in front of a simulator where they can text and drive drunk while they're impaired, to see what the effects of that would cause them. And every time, I've heard good reviews from that, and I think it does well for our students for awareness. And another thing that the ABC Board is funding as well is another program, which is called the Sold Out. It's a school alcohol and character educational program, and that's going to be done where the... This group touches base with sixth graders at an early age, because that's the age you need to stay focused with them. And they work with them, and there's going to be interactions with them, emails, an opportunity for the students to take a pledge, again, on alcohol, substance abuse, and character. And then they'll be touched base with them again as they get into high school, so they're constantly working with them. And those are just some of the things that your local ABC Board is doing, on some positive things with some of the funding there. I just wanted to let that be known for everybody out there.
Thank you, sir. Now, did you say that you were letting the kids drive while impaired? Did I hear that?
No, 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 no. I was not. But it's a nice simulator that they get behind, and they're really shocked when they see the effects of trying to text and drive and draw, what it does. But it's a nice program out there.
Yeah, thank you.
But no, no, not me.
Commissioner Roman?
I was able to attend the Currituck County Business Expo on Saturday. From what I was able to determine, just from the folks that were there, especially the vendors, it was fairly well-attended despite the weather, which was certainly not... Will it ever rain is a question that kept coming up. But in general, there's a lot of folks that are looking for especially summertime help, and thanks to the Currituck County Chamber of Commerce for putting that event on.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCord?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening. How about you, Mr. Jarvis?
Last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to tour county facilities with our Assistant County Manager, Ben Stike Leather. And I just want to say that we went to Knott's Island and toured the fire station there. We went to the Welcome Center, and the wastewater treatment plant, and the water treatment plant, and it just... 911 Communication Center. And it made me proud to be a part of Currituck County. Just the staff was so knowledgeable and just so enthusiastic about what they do day-to-day that most citizens of Currituck County take for granted. That just happens. And I really appreciate you taking me around, Ben. I learned a lot, and really, once again, a proud moment.
Great, thank you.
Did either of y'all get a chance to go to Gibbs Woods and visit the...
We did not. We were on it.
The community's building, that's right.
We were on a tight timetable.
Oh, okay, okay. I suggest you go visit that.
Next time, you can take me there.
All right, there you go.
Give me the tour.
Day trip for Commissioners. Thank you all. All right, next on the agenda this evening, Administrators' Reports, North Carolina Complete Count Commission Presentation on the 2020 Census, and we have Mr. James Cofield, Jr., to talk to us about that this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Chairman White, Commissioner Payment, Commissioner Beaumont, Commissioner McCord, and Commissioner Jarvis, and other members of the podium. I'm James Cofield. I am a member of the Complete Count Commission. There are complete count commissions across the country, and the Governor, in an executive order, established a complete count commission about the end of 2018, I'd say November. And it is the purpose of the Complete Count Commission for the 2020 Census, to heighten the awareness of the 2020 Census, and to solicit your participation in whatever way possible to make sure that every resident in Currituck County is counted, is counted once, and counted where they live. Why does it matter? The complete count, it is important to all of us. It's in the interest of every jurisdiction in North Carolina. It's in the interest of Currituck County to make sure that everyone is counted, counted once, and counted where they live. Federal dollars flow into North Carolina and flow from North Carolina into Currituck County based on the Census. The Census is taken every 10 years. It was established in the Constitution in, I think it was 1790, and every 10 years since then, the census is taken. Let me also say that I'm going to run through, and I think you have the slides in front of you, but feel free to stop me at any point with a question that doesn't interrupt my flow, so. Businesses rely on the census as well. Let's just say there's a Walmart that's looking to locate in a community. They will look at census numbers to make a determination as to where they will want to locate. And importantly, the census data is used for our democracy in the sense that it determines the number of people living in a particular district. And every 10 years, and we'll talk about it a little further as I go along, but census data is the basis for drawing congressional districts. And redistricting occurs based on the information from the census. Both the state and, I suspect, certainly some counties use the census data to make forecasts and projections during the 10-year period. But the basis of that, the baseline, is the census that occurs every 10 years. As I mentioned, I'm sorry, I'm not... I'm supposed to use this flicker here. Census impact. I mentioned that it is required every 10 years. Approximately $1,600 per person flows into North Carolina based on the census data, and the 1623 per person is based on the fiscal year 2015. So again, it's important for the state as a whole, and needless to say, it's important The census information is used to verify group residences, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, dormitories, and it connects the census forms with households. Boundary Annexation Survey for verification of corporate boundaries, and it's used to verify the information that you already have. As I mentioned, it's used... The census data is used as a foundation for the apportionment of the U.S. House seats, and drives over $1,600 per person in federal funds into North Carolina. Participation Risk. The Census Bureau has known for years, and it gets refined every 10 years, that it's hard to count some people in North Carolina, in Currituck County. And this is called participation risk, and it's also known as hard-to-count communities. What are the hard-to-count communities? Some of them include people who have recently migrated into Currituck County, language difficulties, language other than English might well make them a hard-to-count community, race might well, literacy, preschool children, poverty, all of what are generally classified as hard-to-count communities. I will say a little bit more about it later, but this means that special efforts are put forth to make sure that individuals who are in hard-to-count communities are counted. Complete count communities. Certainly, county governments help a great deal in making sure and ensuring that every resident in Currituck County is counted, counted once, and counted where they live. And notice that I said resident, not citizen, every resident. So if someone is a resident of Currituck County, that resident uses the resources of Currituck County. And it is therefore in the county's interest to make sure that that person is counted, because, again, funds that flow into Currituck County come as a result of census data. The outreach will depend a little bit on each community, but businesses tend to help a lot. Media, community organizations, education, particularly preschool, the preschool children, ex-offender programs, faith-based organizations, group quarters, again, nursing home, assisted living, dormitories, homeless, if there are homeless communities here in Currituck County, libraries, senior citizens, special housing, all are communities that the Census Bureau tends to make a special effort to reach, because they are hard-to-count communities. $16.3 billion in federal funds flow into North Carolina, again, based on the Census, which in this instance will be the 2020 Census. I should say now that we are at the very beginning of the census process. The count day is April 1, 2020. So we are a little over a year ahead of the actual count day. Now, the process will begin before then, we're at the very beginning of this process now. Census information is given to... Is made public and given to the President. I think the date is December 31, 2020. So there's a lot that happens between now and the actual census count date, which is April 1, and the date that the report is finalized and delivered to the President. $1.5 billion in state funds is distributed to municipalities and counties, again, based on census data. That's about $205 per capita. This graph shows the increase in population in North Carolina from the early 1700s. I'm going to move to the next slide, because it's easier to see over the last few census count years. The green bars are the projected population of North Carolina in 2020, 2030, and 2037. We are relying now on the 2010 census information and projections from that, and forecasts take us through today, 2019. But you can see, if you look at 20... Oh, let's look at 2000 as an example. There were approximately 18 million, 8 million people living in North Carolina in 2000. In 2010, that number had jumped, or jumped, 1.5 million people to 9.5 million. It is anticipated that in 2020, that number will jump to 10.6 million residents in North More of the same of the growth in North Carolina. If you look at... North Carolina is the ninth-largest state in the country, with a population of 10.3 million people. Can you see California at the top of the list is the largest state in the country, Texas, Florida, New York, Pennsylvania, Illinois, Ohio, Georgia, and North Carolina. This graph shows the change in population by county. And Currituck County, Deere County are two counties in the easternmost area of the state where their population is growing. There's a net increase in population. You could see in the yellow-colored counties, the counties where the... There's a net drop in population in those counties. I have visited, as a part of my outreach, Deere, Hyde, Washington, Washington and Hyde being two counties where the population is dropping. Happy to be here in Currituck, where the population is increasing, as it's increasing in Deere County. I'm a resident of Deere County. What influences in the counties that are growing, what influences the population growth? Net migration in the counties... Oops, sorry. Net migration in the counties that are growing comes largely... Or the population increase comes largely from net migration as opposed to natural increases. Natural increases means just birth, child births. So much of the growth you are seeing in Currituck County, much of the growth that we are witnessing in Deere County, is the result of net migration, people moving into the county from other With the exception of... With the exception of Florida and Texas, net migration in North Carolina is the third-largest in the country state in the country. And you can see those numbers in the other states. So net migration in Florida is the highest, Texas second, North Carolina third. Where were... Of the folk who are moving into North Carolina, where are they coming from? And this graph shows the geographical spread of...
We can't see that too well from here.
Oh, okay.
You want to hit a couple of the highlights for us, please?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
In North Carolina, the place of birth for most people in North Carolina, they were native-born, 56% in North Carolina. 15% of the folk, the people who move into North Carolina, are coming from the north. 10% are coming from... 15% are coming from the south. 10% migrate into North Carolina from the north. 7.8% are foreign-born. 6% move into North Carolina from the Midwest, and 3.1% move into North Carolina from the This graph, it's the layout of the state of North Carolina, shows the rate of net migration. And in both Currituck County and in Deere County, the rate of net migration is 75% or Population by race and Hispanic origin from 2016 to 2000, projected to 2037, the graph speaks for itself. Immigrants into North Carolina. Of the roughly 10 million, 10.3 million people who live in North Carolina, looking since the last census, roughly 3/4 of a million people are foreign-born, who have migrated into North Carolina, are foreign-born. Roughly a half a million are non-citizens, and roughly 350,000 are unauthorized immigrants. Let me just emphasize, if I can, at the risk of being redundant, that for the purposes of Currituck County, for you, the Commissioners, it matters not what category these people fall in, it matters not whether the people are citizens or not. If they're living, if they're residents of Currituck County, they're using the resources of Currituck County. And it is in your interest that everyone who's a resident of Currituck County is counted. Let's just say, use as an example, the State Department of Transportation. If they are considering whether to repave a particular state road, or increase the traveling capacity of a state road, they look at the census data and form a net judgment. And so if a particular person is traveling that road, a particular road, you want the funds to flow into the county to support improvements of those roads. So again, I'm only using that as an example to say, it matters not for census information whether the person is foreign-born or a citizen or non-citizen, because they're traveling over that road. And I venture to say pretty much the same for the... Going out on a limb a little bit, but saying the same is the same for school systems here in Currituck County. And lastly, what does Currituck County look like in terms of the demographic breakdown? Total population of roughly 25,000 people. Persons under five years, 4.8%. Persons over 65 years, 15%. Median household income, right around $61,000. Persons living in poverty, roughly 10%. Persons with high school or higher educational attainment, 87.2%. And foreign-born persons, roughly 3%. Of this population, let's see, folk in Currituck County that are singularly white, 90% of the population is singularly white, as opposed to mixed-race. Black or African-American alone, 6.2%. American Indians, 0.6%. American Indians, zero point six percent, and they fall off from there.
Feel your part, Mike.
It is my hope that Currituck County will embrace... Will recognize the need to do everything that you can to assist in the complete count of the residents of Currituck County for the 2020 census. It is in your interest to do so, both in terms of population per se and in dollars that will flow into Currituck County, both from the federal level and the state. You know, sometimes I'm asked, well, how can a county help? You can help by spreading the word of the importance of the 2020 census. I don't yet have, although I suspect in short order, I'll have some prototypes from the state office of some of the things that other counties have done, such as putting a flyer in the tax bill and the water bill that alerts people to the 2020 census, or a caption at the bottom of either of those. A bumper sticker on the bumpers of county-owned vehicles that alert people to the importance of the 2020 census. Those are some things that other counties have done. Again, I suspect I'll have some prototypes from the state office in short order. And if you're interested, I can get that to you. But you know the people in Currituck County. You know them better than anyone else. The census is a federal initiative. And the people who will be enumerators, those are the people who are knocking on the doors and taking the census, are federal employees. Because you know the people in Currituck County better than anyone else, it's in your interest to particularly help with the hard-to-count communities. And you might have some sessions in which you give that some real thought and think about how you reach those hard-to-count communities. You can certainly consider me as your ambassador for the 2020 census. I'm here to help you. I'm here to talk about it. I'm here to help you to count everyone in Dare County. I mean, in, I'm sorry, Dare County too, but Currituck County.
Dare County.
I'm happy to entertain any questions.
So you said, okay, so this kicks in everyone. So from a, it really matters for a representation at a federal level. It affects the House seats, right?
Absolutely.
Right, okay.
Redistricting will occur based on the 2020 census numbers. I think the projected date of when that will begin to occur is in, is April 1st, 2021.
Any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
I put you all asleep.
Very informative.
Thank you. You know, look to me as your ambassador. However, I can be helpful to you to get your citizens counted, not your citizens, your residents counted and share information that I see from across the state. And what flows into the state is looking at what is happening across the country. I'll be happy to share that information with you.
How do we find you?
Ms. Walton.
It's on speed dial. She's got to go speed dial, so it's okay.
Thank you again very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it very much. Thanks for coming out this evening. Okay, before we move on this evening, we have one housekeeping thing. I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda to add a closed session to discuss personnel matters after our special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda on administrative reports, Senior Center Annual Report. We have Ms. Stacy Joseph here, our Senior Center Coordinator. Always good times. Thank you for coming out.
Yeah, start the clock.
Ike left.
I will say, if you haven't experienced my reports before, it's similar to this guy right here without the slides. Lots of numbers. Not going to do that to you tonight. I will say, Ben, Notts Island Senior Center, they're expecting you. There you go. I'm going to touch on a couple of things for Ms. Jarvis because she might not know what we do. So I'm going to cover a few things. We have three senior centers. We have the main one that's in Barco, where my office is, next to the YMCA. We have one in Powell's Point and we have one in Notts Island. They bury you in hours. My staff is there and I'm getting nervous, I don't know why. You know, every time my stuff puts this podium, I go a little crazy. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, you seem completely relaxed.
I don't know what it is.
You're not showing it.
I am showing it. I'm going to give a little review of the 2018 calendar year. I will start with home-delivered meals. We served 10,230 home-delivered meals for 2018. We served thirty-eight, 3,828 surrogate meals for 2018. Now you see the big difference there. That is going to continue to show that difference as time goes on in our county ages. We had 151 volunteers serving over 3,400 hours for eighteen, for 55 shut-ins. Most of those volunteer hours are for home-delivered meals. In 2018, between all three sites, we offered a combined total of over 300 different activities and programs. That's outside of your normal day pickleballs and puzzles and things of that nature. In 2014, we also started doing programming in Corolla and we've kind of expanded that as we've gone along. We're now up to twice-a-week yoga, a couple of presentations, a couple of trips. And now we're looking at, and you'll see it in the budget, that we're trying to increase the months that we're doing yoga. It's almost a year-round, couple of months off in the summer to meet more people. We always have a waiting list. It's been well-participated in. We hold those yoga classes and presentations at the Corolla Library. You may notice if you stop by Powell's Point in Notts Island, we are trying to do some minor renovations and making things look more visibly appealing. See how nervous I am? It's terrible. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. We've done dishwashers. We just got finished doing carpet at Powell's Point. Literally, it's taken a whole week to do that, but it looks great. Dancing pictures. It's a big improvement. We are getting ready to have a new way of tracking our seniors when they come into Barco. It's my senior center. You guys approved it through the budget for this year. He's looking at me going, no, I didn't. Yes, you did. It is a new, you're going to, it's a touchscreen. You're going to be able...
It is her senior.
It's a touchscreen system. You're going to come in and be able to log in for what you're there for, but it allows us to track all kinds of different demographics, see how we're using the senior center, what we need to change, how to better meet the needs and things like that. It's going to give us a clearer picture because right now, and I must say the one prediction, that by 2025, one in five folks in North Carolina will be 65 or older. And he was completely right. Currituck County is one of the fastest aging populated counties in North Carolina. So we just need to keep that in mind. Folks are using the center differently in Barco. We've noticed they're coming in, baby boomers, a little bit more on the go, maybe working, watching grandkids. They're not maybe necessarily sticking around all the time for that meal, but you're seeing that home-delivered meal increase. So there's a big age gap and we're trying to figure out how to meet those needs, how to keep the senior center relevant and keep people coming in. Powell's Point and Notts Island are pretty much the same in how they utilize it. But we're going to have to look at some different ways to adjust to meet the needs of the younger population too that's coming in. March for Meals, has everybody here gotten their letter from the Abermarl Commission on March for Meals? Okay? No? You will, I'll just forward it right to you.
All right.
Okay? In the past, the Board of Commissioners have been great about volunteering to deliver meals one hour out of the month of March to bring awareness to hunger and senior nutrition for home-delivered. We take a picture. We send it sometimes to state, regional level, and it just, not only does it bring awareness of the people and they call it community champions, people in the spotlight, but the home-delivered folks absolutely love having commissioners in. You would think you're the President of the United States. They love it. They can't believe you're there. So it really makes their day. You would go out with myself or one of my staff and deliver meals. We try to make a short route. It really gives you an opportunity, if you haven't done it, to get out and meet the seniors, to see how people live. There's a little bit of everything. You're looking at me with a weird face, why? He delivers meals with his wife sometimes, so he's been out there quite a bit and he knows.
It is an extremely valuable service. And I can tell you, people look forward to that meal every single day. And you know, it's just reminds us all that we will all get old one day. And you know, our seniors are some of our most valuable assets and you know, they sometimes go forgotten.
See, he should be speaking up here for me.
Well, he's approaching that senior center.
He is, he is approaching that age. The important thing about him delivering meals, and that's probably the biggest thing that I will always push, is not only are you going out and delivering the meals, it's socialization, it's keeping them a part of the community, but it's socialization for your wife. Yes, I know. But it keeps them a part of the community.
You said it's a short route?
It'll be a short route.
You mean, less than three hours?
Hopefully, yes, it's supposed to only take you an hour. But it keeps people active in the community. It gives, it lays eyes on them to see if there's a problem. You bring that back to us and then we're calling people, trying to get the additional resources that they may need. So I will be sending out a little follow-up email to see if anybody's interested in doing that. We would love to have you. And if you haven't done it, like I said, it's a great opportunity to see what home-delivered meals is about. A few upcoming things with the centers. Once again, we're going to host the Abermarl Senior Games Pickleball Tournament at the Parks and Rec Gym on April the 10th at 9:00 a.m. If you do not know what pickleball is, or you love pickleball, you can come out and support the seniors in your county as they play. It's an all-day thing, but it's a lot of fun to watch and please, please feel free to stop in. We are currently doing AARP tax preparation. We've done this for the last six years. And every year, we seem to help more and more people. They get more tax preparers and we're able to get everybody in the door. It is open to the public regardless of age. It's geared to low to moderate income. When they call us at the center to schedule an appointment, we do kind of pre-screen if they haven't had their taxes done there before to make sure they meet the requirements. Sanctuary Vineyard event is coming up. For all you have been to the Sanctuary Vineyard event with the Chamber, it is a collaboration between the Chamber of Commerce for us and the Wild Horse Fund. And it's a great night. It's $75. There's a silent auction, dinner, dance, drinks are provided. The event will be held on April the 13th. Tickets are not available yet, but they will be as soon as Josh prints them out. I'm hoping in the next week or two. All the folks here receiving the newsletter from the senior center? Yes? Okay. If you're not, you should be. And if you haven't read it, read it. Because it has a lot of great information in it. It'll give you an overview of what the senior centers do, help you better understand what programs and activities we have and what additional services that we may have as well. So if you have any questions after you read it or look over it, just give me a call and I'll be happy to answer them. In addition to providing activity, nutrition and socialization, our goal is to connect Currituck County seniors with the resources that they need, such as Medicare, respite care, transportation, health education, and so forth. If we don't offer it, we're going to get in contact with somebody who does. We're going to follow up and make sure they got it. We try to be a one-stop shop. So they come to us for what they need and we don't, you know, pass them along to somebody else. We just want to make sure they, there's resources. If we don't have them, other agencies and other counties or state level do. And we try every resource that we can possibly do before we have to say, no, we can't help you. We try not to do that. Now I'm down to the thank you. See how quick that was? Want to thank the Board of Commissioners always for helping me out throughout the year with the home-delivered meals or the events we have. If you haven't had an opportunity to come to our volunteer banquet, we usually have that in September. Many of the board does come to that. And I often ask them to speak and say a few words. If you're lucky, you might see Kitty do a show. She did a little dance routine last time. It's a great time. It's a great opportunity to thank our volunteers for all they do because we wouldn't be able to do the programs that we have without them. I also want to thank all the departments. I lean on a lot of the departments in the county all through the year, whether it's bouncing ideas off or working on a client that we have or just needing help with something that we're doing. They are fantastic, you know? We all butt heads on occasion, but they're fantastic and you can count on them. And that is a great place to work. So I'm appreciative of them in addition to the agencies that we have outside of the county that we partner up with. I have to always give kudos to my staff. You know, staff goes unnoticed a lot of the time by their supervisors and I want to make sure that my staff's always recognized for the hard work they do. They make our program successful. They make sure volunteers are in place. They work really hard setting up for events, taking trips and making sure if a senior comes in the door and they have a problem or an issue, they're going to do everything they can to resolve that. They don't turn a blind eye or say, I can't help you. Okay, so they're outstanding. If you haven't had an opportunity to stop by one of the senior centers to do, they would love to meet you and it would be an opportunity for the staff there to show you around the building and also what we offer and maybe find out some things you don't offer so that we can, you know, look into doing those things, okay? The senior centers are open to seniors 55 and plus, 60 to eat there. All sites are open Monday through Friday with varying hours. For more information, you can call 232-3505. And that's it, that's it, quick. No data, no. A little nervousness in the beginning. It's like a fishbowl effect. I don't know why.
Yeah, it's weird.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do.
I bet you do.
Were you in the band?
No, I was not a band geek.
That wasn't my question, Paul. The Powell's Point Center, did you say all the repairs work and now complete? Or there's a few more to do?
No, it's open, it's open as business as normal tomorrow. There's some minor things that they'll go back and do around the folks in the normal hours and stuff, you know, like molding and stuff like that. It's officially open. Yeah, the carpet's down, the furniture's back up, and nutrition is back in the game. So we're good to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You mentioned the volunteers banquet in September. Did you have a date yet?
I do not have a date yet. It will be in September, I just haven't gotten that far out.
Did you say you emailed those invitations out?
I usually email, I put them in your box. And what happens is I've noticed that if I do that, you guys don't get them until sometimes a couple of weeks late. So I put them in the box and I email them to you.
Okay, well, I just looked at the emails from you. I had not seen one, so please email it again.
Well, no, I haven't done it yet. I will do it. I will do it.
I was getting worried, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I will. You'll come out probably in August for the volunteer banquet.
Thank you.
March for Meals, I'll email that out to you.
Thank you for all you guys do. I know Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday from 8:00 to 12:00, I know where my father is at all times and that's like my break from my cell phone not ringing because he's at the senior center.
He does live there, yes.
Yes, he does, and I appreciate it.
No problem.
Probably. Thank you.
Thank you for entertaining me.
Thank you very much. All right. Next agenda item, we have public hearings. PB 19-02, Hunter text amendment. And this is to request an amendment to Chapter 4 of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow crab shedding with a fully closed building in the general zoning district. And I will now open the public hearing for that and you're, I guess you're up over here now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight before you have a text amendment to allow crab shedding in the general business, within a fully enclosed building, within a general business zoning district, a little history, a little background on this text amendment. Hunter Stewart came to staff to talk about enlarging his business, his crabbing business, and establishing in a location that is Zone GB, general business. We do not allow crab shedding in our general business zoning district. And we also found out a couple of... and we also found out a couple of other small inconsistencies, some incorrect language that we had concerning, um, with the, uh, the crab shedding. Currently, we are allowing it in our ag, AG, our mixed-use residential, limited industrial, and, I mean, sorry, light industrial and heavy industrial. Um, so this text amendment would allow crab shedding in our GB, it would amend the use table to allow crab shedding in our general business district. Um, so we also, um, did a little bit of reorganization with our crab shedding amendment. Well, like I said, we found out there were little incorrect, there were a little bit of incorrections that we needed to, um, to, uh, the staff felt we needed to address. So in general standards, um, we added the language, "Open storage must be fenced with opaque fencing and minimum six feet in height." This would be for all crab shedding businesses, for all crab shedding operations. Um, and on-premise sale of soft crabs and peeler crabs will be allowed. Um, we also added additional standards for any crab shedding locations that are in the AG and MXR, because those are residential districts, so we added additional standards that all phases of the operation must be connect, conducted not less than 10 feet away from property lines and not less than 50 feet away from an adjacent dwelling. Also, no more than one car, truck, no more than one vehicle could be visible, or any part of a vehicle could be visible from an adjacent street should be allowed on-site, and no vehicle or trailer greater than eight by 32 feet would be allowed on-site. Um, for the additional standards in, for crab shedding operations in the general business district, um, these are the applicants actually request, would be that all equipment of the operation can, such as tanks, coolers, and freezers, must be within the fully enclosed building, and on-premise of the wholesale soft crab and peeler crab is allowed. Um, the, uh, planning board and staff does recommend approval of this, um, text amendment. Uh, we find that it is consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan, um, because of Policy CD1, Neighborhood Serving Commercial Districts and Small-Scale Businesses are encouraged. Um, and Policy ED1, the county encourages new and expanding industries and businesses that diversify the local economy, train and utilize a more highly skilled labor force, and are compatible with the environmental quality and natural amenity-based economy of the, of Currituck County. Um, and I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have about this text amendment.
I'm looking at the, um, no more than one car, truck, van, or other vehicle, or part of vehicle visible from adjacent street allowed on-site.
That's on the, that's on the ag or-
Yeah, that would-
MXR. That's for if you're in a, basically goes back to our neighborhood business standards.
For the MXR districts.
Yeah.
Okay, so go back a slide. I know, Ben. Okay, so on-premise sale of soft-shell crabs is allowed. The, the car is visible, so you are, you're allowed to have people come in to buy?
Yes, but that, the, the vehicle associated with the crab shedding operation, not necessarily-
Okay, so go forward a slide.
Okay.
That's not what that says. So I would suggest to you that the language that you just spoke, associated with the crab shedding operation, that that verbiage needs to be included in the, in the text.
Go back to slide, go back to slide. What are you saying?
So that's saying only one vehicle is allowed on the, on-site, visible from the adjacent street, yet you have people going there to purchase. In other words, you don't want a bunch of vehicles associated with the crabbing operation lining up and visible from the street, right?
Right.
But that's not what it says.
On-premise says, so what you're saying, okay. So people coming to buy the-
Would.
Or, there may be more than-
Correct.
People, didn't it?
Correct.
Okay, I see what you're getting at. Okay.
So, yeah, I, I would recommend that that language be added to them.
We don't currently allow, well, I guess it's ag and MXR, so it would be, okay, yeah, okay. I'm with, all right, got it, got it, yeah, yeah, got it, right.
In the agenda packet, it does, it does clarify that it applies, it says to ag and MXR, but it doesn't say the vehicle itself, so.
In the ag and MXR districts. Says, open stores, fences. Okay. Is it, we clear? All right. Any further questions from Mrs. Cicero?
So, so I guess that's to clarify, we wanna clear up the type of vehicles that are limited, to, to only-
It's associated with the crab shedding operation. This is the language that would be added.
The applicant is here as well.
Okay. Um, well, at this time, I can bring the applicant up if you'd like to, open that up for you to speak.
How are we doing?
Good. Would you just state your name, please, and?
My name is Hunter Stewart. I live at, uh, 102 Old Oaks. I've been a resident of Currituck all my life. I would, I would like to request the Board of Commissioners to consider allowing indoor blue crab shedding in general business zone areas. As simply said, I do believe it is a general business here in Currituck that does provide local seafood to local customers. Other than that packet that was provided, is there any other questions that I could answer?
So basically, everything in the packet, you're in agreeance with staff and the planning staff to everything?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, that's, I always just wanna make sure that's-
Sure. I've got one myself.
Okay, so make sure we got it.
Yes, sir.
Everybody's on the same playing field. Any further questions? Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Um, I have no one signed up for a public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this in public comment? Okay. Well, then I will not open public comment this evening, so we have no one to speak to it.
Mr. Chairman, I think, for, for the record, just open-
Okay, uh, open public comment and close-
No, there's no one to speak.
There's no one here, so we'll close public comment now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this time, I'll just, uh, close the, uh, public hearing. Any, any more discussion from the board? Anyone like to make a motion on this item?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 1902, uh, the text amendment concerning crab shedding with the additional language, uh, be added, uh, in the description of the vehicles associated with the, the business specifically, uh, something to the effect of, um, no more than one car, so paragraph, uh, triple I, no more than one car, truck, van, or other vehicle, or part of vehicle visible from the adjacent street, loud on the site, associated with the crab shedding business. Does that work, Mr. Cicero?
Yes, yes, Mr. Commissioner.
Good. All right.
Did you want to add anything to the?
And now the rest of-
No, those are over there, okay. Um, and that approval would be based on the, uh, the Land Use Plan, uh, vision statement references protection of vital water resources while building a, the thriving and sustainable local economy.
All right.
I'll second that.
Second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, PB 19-04, Currituck County Revised Solar Amendment. Um, this is clarification regarding size limits on solar energy facilities, and something we've heard before. And, uh, at this time, um, I'll open the public hearing. Miss Cicero, you're back in front of us again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, after January, when, uh, the board, um, approved, uh, the solar language, there were some conditions or some, uh, issues that we, we felt weren't resolved with that, um, and this text amendment, we hope, will resolve those issues. Um, we are amending Chapter 4, uh, 4.2.3 K Solar Energy Facilities to, um, have a maximum, the, the draft language that we are proposing is the maximum, the maximum size, that the maximum solar energy facility project size for parcels under single ownership is 1,000 acres. Um, the maximum size for a solar project for adjoining parcels under different ownerships is 1,500 acres, and if two or more parcels are part of the same, uh, solar project, the parcels must be abutting. Abutting is defined in our UDO as sharing a common property corner or a common property line or boundary. We are also adding the language, um, concerning the buffer, that certification from a landscape contractor, landscape architect, or an international society, arboriculture, probably butchered that word, certified arborist that 1,000, sorry, 1,000, 100% opacity will be reached in, at maximum panel height within five years. Um, also, within the development plan, uh, the draft is proposing to add, add language addressing the location of any access doors for buildings that would house inverters, um, inverter equipment must face away from the naval support activity, uh, Northwest Annex. So essentially, they would be having to, uh, face those doors south. We're also recommending language about ditch maintenance, uh, that the CFE is responsible for maintaining all drainage ditches adjoining or traversing the site to keep the ditches free and clear of drainage impediments. Development subject to these standards shall provide a 25-foot maintenance access drainage easement along at least one side of the waterway conveyance system that drains more than five acres. The easement shall include the conveyance measured from the top of the embankment. Uh, we also, uh, added language where it comes to, uh, decommissioning, the decommissioning plan, um, added the language, uh, the decommissioning plan shall be updated with the Planning and Community Development Department every three years or upon change of property or S, solar energy facility ownership beyond two degrees of kinship. Um, so that was the proposal. Um, staff does recommend, um, the language as presented. The planning board recommended the complete removal of any reference to a maximum size, so they recommended removal of, um, the 1,000 acres under one ownership, 1,500 under two ownerships, and the removal of the language, uh, two or more parcels can be on the same project if they are budding. See, um, we do think that it is, uh, consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan, because it protects active agricultural lands having a high productive potential and conserves those lands continued for agricultural use, Policy AG1. It also provides a new and expanding industry that trains and utilizes a more highly skilled labor force and diversifies the local economy, that's Policy ED1. It is also reasonable in the public interest because it prevents incompatible solar array projects from being established that could adversely impact the quality of life for county residents. And I'll be glad to take any questions about the proposed draft language before you, concerning solar facilities.
Okay. Um, I just have one, and bringing this up, uh, and, uh, probably the county attorney might be better to speak to this, but, um, we had some discussion about abutting, adjoining, and adjacent, and I know that the planning board took out the abutting, so I would just like to get a clarification on what those terms actually mean as far as planning goes and the law goes, and how they would interplay in this.
Well, first, of course, we would look to see whether our, our ordinance defines any of those terms, and as Miss Cicero said a moment ago, we do define abutting as a condition of two adjoining lots having a co, common property line or boundary. This, this ordinance amendment, uh, also, uh, has the word adjoining in it, which we do not define that term in our ordinance. So as I was looking at some case law, um, some of our courts have defined that essentially the same as we define abutting. So I'm not sure what we're trying to do, or what we mean by the word adjoining in this proposed amendment. Um, or, and then we defined adjacent, much like we define abutting, meaning that an adjacent properties must have a common, uh, share a part or all of a common lot line or boundary with another lot, but we also add for adjacent, uh, or land that is directly across a public street or right-of-way. So we just need to make sure we understand what we mean as we're using these different terms within this zoning text amendment.
Okay, so if a, if a, if someone comes in and you have two properties side by side and a road going between those, that's the divider between the two tracks, under, uh, abutting, they would not be counted as one project?
They would, they would not, the way we define it, there would not be a budding, they, they would be adjacent.
Okay, so, so then, uh, a better, a better plan of action would be adjacent if we wanted to, to allow those people to be able to merge two, two projects together, I guess, with the road going between them. Is, is really why I'm bringing this up, because that's, that's something that's gonna happen in this county. We have people that own property on both sides of the road, or, um, or maybe we're putting a project together on, on two sides of the road, so.
So should we change the word adjoining in this proposed change to abutting, since we don't address the word adjoining in the UDO?
All the way around.
All the way out of it.
Take a budding out and make them adjacent.
So we take adjoining and abutting out and do adjacent for both of those?
Right, and that allows for those projects.
So that would allow you to have two, two projects on one side of the road with the same boundary, plus if there was a property owner in that project across the street, they could do this, they could still be part of the project.
Now, when it says adjacent, now what if you have property A here, and then there's a property behind it, you know, I mean, would that be considered adjacent?
As long as you're touching. Yeah, 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 under our definition, it, while, while it would be abutting, it also would be-
It would be adjacent, right. Adjacent and or budding.
I just wanna make sure we have the language in there that, that allows for that across a road, or, so that-
But during our work session, we specifically talked about this and said that that's not what we were after, that, that when it crossed the road, rather than have, I mean, the budding was the terminology after we went through all of this, and a budding was the terminology that we collectively, we all agreed to.
Yeah, and for my, my part, I know that, just, just reading through it and then looking at it and coming up with different, I, yes, you're correct, we did, but, um, I just, it just seems like it's, it's, it's a little bit unfair to the individuals, or to have a solar company have to, to put two different projects together, it's twice the work for the staff to do two different projects together, and, um, and, and then they have to come before us again. So it's more work for us as a board to approve another solar facility that could easily be rectified, especially for a road that might even be an easement that was granted by the two landowners to the state or the, or whomever.
So, so we're gonna go with the terminology adjacent, not adjoining or abutting?
Well, it depends on the motion.
Well, yeah, it depends, but, but, I mean, that's what we're, that's, that's what-
I think that's the general consensus, is that adjacent, uh, would allow these projects to proceed across the road from each other, essentially. Why did it check across the road? We'll find the answer.
So like, all right, if a farmer, and I'm gonna use Putt and Ridge Road, 'cause it's an, it's an easy, you have Putt and Ridge Road, um, if a farmer owns a land across on the north side, and one owns on the south side, and they're either related, or, or they wanna put their, theirs together, Putt and Ridge Road would not make that two projects. It could still be one.
If you use the word adjacent.
Adjacent, not abutting or adjoining. Right, okay.
Okay. Everybody clear on that one? If it wasn't for the lawyers, it would be a lot clearer.
So one of the things that we did, that does not relieve the setbacks, correct?
Right.
Even though they're adjacent-
They still have the road setbacks.
Their setbacks remain 150 feet on each parcel.
Yes, that was not changed.
Exception, now what if they're adjacent or budding? Now, what if they're right beside each other? Like, I mean, they're, all right, we go back to Putt and Ridge Road.
Allowed that, if they were-
We allow that.
If they were, if they were fully connected, but the road causes an extra layer of separation between them, in form of a setback. So yes, that would still be, the opacity standards would still be there, and the setbacks would still be there, as far as I understand it.
You just would not have to do the buffer along that adjoining, abutting property line.
Right. Abutting, abutting allows them to-
Although that could be adjacent under our definition.
You're gonna need to clean this up at some point.
Yes.
Okay, so a single owner, single project can do up to 1,000 acres. Okay, so a single owner, single project can do up to 1,000 acres.
Two or more.
Two or more can do up to 1,500.
1,500, adjacent.
Adjacent acreage.
Adjacent parcels.
Parcels, or.
So I made sure I understood that, okay.
And the setbacks would be in if there was separated by a road, but if they were side by side, no setback.
A budding.
Yeah, a budding.
Or adjacent.
Or adjacent.
Those words will be stuck in my head. Forever. It's like a pertinences, that one just, you know, we had to get that one around. Okay. Anything else for staff this evening? Okay. Ms. Cicero, thank you very much. As we are the applicant, with this text amendment, I guess we're good. I'll open public comment at this time. I don't believe I have anyone signed up. I do not. Was there anyone that'd like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment and close the public hearing at this time. Is there any further discussion from the board? Would anyone like to put forth a motion at this time?
I did the last one, it was extremely long, but I mean, I guess, I'll roll the dice again, here we go.
This one's easy.
Yeah, this one's a lot easier. My motion is to approve P B nineteen dash zero four, Currituck County Solar Text Amendment because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the 2006 land use plan. The vision statement in the land use plan specifically directs protection of our vital land and water, natural resources. Do I need to read the whole?
No, you can.
Or just hit the verbiage?
The S E F, I think you can go in there and hit the.
All right, the S E F protects active agricultural lands having a high productive potential and conserves those lands for continued agricultural use.
It meets land use policy.
It meets the land use policy. It also, A G one, it provides a new and expanding industry that trans and utilizes a more highly skilled labor force and diversifies the local economy.
That's a reason for denial. Now. The request is reasonable in the public interest.
The request is reasonable in the public interest. It prevents incompatible solar array projects from being established that could adversely impact the quality of life for county residents. It limits the size of S E F, the size reduction coupled with the increased setbacks in the existing ordinance protects the public from a S E F encroaching into unwanted areas. It has little to no impact on adequate public facilities, i.e. fire, sheriff, schools, water.
And then you need your conditions. That's what the ones we would. Right. So you're going to.
We're going to, and the conditions, we're going to change the term abutting to adjacent?
Adjoining and abutting term?
Yeah, adjoining and abutting to adjacent. And abutting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the sizes of 1,000 for one single owner, or two or more up to 1,500 acres of a parcel. The certification, which we added the landscape contractor from before when it was just the landscape architect or a arborist, with the opacity will be reached at the maximum panel height within five years shall be submitted.
And we had, I think there was.
Location access.
Oh, yeah, the location access.
The location of the access doors for buildings that house inverter equipment must face away from the naval support activity northwest annex.
Ditch maintenance.
Ditch maintenance, that is responsible for maintaining all drainage ditches adjoining or traversing the site to keep the ditches free and clear of drainage impediments. Development subject to these standards shall provide a, I guess it's 25-foot maintenance access drainage easement along at least one side of the waterway conveyance systems that drains more than five acres. The easement shall include the conveyance measured from the top of the embankment.
All right. You got it.
And the last thing, and the decommissioning plan shall be updated with the planning and the community development department every three years or upon change of property ownership beyond two degrees of kinship.
All right.
That was a lot easier than the last one.
Was everybody clear on this one this time around? Get everything we need?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Call the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda, P B nineteen dash zero one, Currituck County, request a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Four, Use Standards, to allow freestanding telecommunications tower in a single-family resident outer banks remote zoning district with a use permit. And I'll open a public hearing and turn it over to Ms. Cicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Another text amendment before you this evening, this time, once again, the county is the applicant, and this is to allow telecommunications towers with certain restrictions in the single-family residential remote zoning district with a use permit. Currently, we only allow telecommunications towers in our ag district, in general business, and in light industrial and heavy industrial. And we also, we do have a half-mile buffer between telecommunications towers. So as, from this map, you can see that there are no telecommunications towers within a half-mile or within four miles of a proposed location in the off-road area. So this text amendment would allow for telecommunications towers in the off-road area, the S F R zoning district with a use permit. So we would be amending the use table, but then we would also add some caveats to the language about telecommunications towers. It would be, the language before you would restrict the height to 190 feet in the S F R. And we allow, we do allow towers to go up to 450 feet, but if they're going to be in the off-road area, they're going to, they're restricted to 190 feet. They establish a minimum setback is 1,000 feet from the Atlantic Ocean, from the mean high watermark, and establish a minimum of four-mile separation in the single-family remote zoning district. It also further clarifies the exemption that we have for county facilities or volunteer fire departments, properties to have towers on them. Staff does recommend approval of this text amendment. We were a little bit concerned about this because the land use plan does have language for us to restrict towers and to keep too many, too much infrastructure from going into the off-road area. Because we only allow towers on commercially zoned property, ag, general business, L I and H I, there was no locations in the off-road area for towers to be placed. And that was putting a strain potentially on communication and emergency response. So staff does recommend approval of this text amendment from, let me get, for land Sorry. Policy O B one, telecommunications tower provide improved communication services, cellular and emergency communications, in an effort to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents and visitors in the off-road area, and an increased setback from the Atlantic Ocean, mean-high watermark, maximum tower height, and strategic location of potential telecommunications towers will limit the adverse impact to nearby properties and provides a buffer from the ocean. And that's policy C A four. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because the Corova sub-area maintains hundreds of previously platted lots that are not developed. As these lots continue to develop with houses, the proposed text amendment addresses a community need by allowing telecommunications tower in a limited, remote, and underserved area of the county. The planning board does recommend approval of this text amendment as written. This would be for just for, the single-family residential, the off-road area would be the only residential district that we allow towers in, and that would be the dark, well, the light green on your map here for the zoning district. Are there any questions about this text amendment?
The only question I've had from a few people was over concern of the four-mile radius, but I think the reality is, where the, on the map, the lower portion of the four-by-four area is kind of, is blocked in by two areas that are not buildable, so. So it covers Swan Beach, the tower from Corova covers North Swan Beach and Corova, there's about a four or five mile radius, as far as I understand it, for towers. It basically covers the four-by-four area, gets you guys communication for the sheriff's department, fire department, EMS services that are lacking in that area currently, and opens up cellular communications if necessary for that area as well.
Between Swan Beach and the potential location here in Corova, we'd get good coverage.
Uh huh. Yeah, it's pretty centrally located in Swan Beach, so. Any questions for Ms. Cicero this evening? Thank you, Ms. Cicero. I don't have anyone sign up for public comment, but I'll open public comment. Anyone like to speak to that? Seeing no one, I will close public comment. And at this time, close the hearing. And I'll make a motion on this one. I move to approve P B nineteen dash zero one, Currituck County, because the text amendment request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the 2006 land use plan, because the visiting statement of the L U P references maintaining enhancing quality of life within our communities. The allowance of telecommunications towers in the off-road area could provide increased cellular and emergency communication services. It is consistent with policy C A seven. An increased setback from the Atlantic Ocean, mean-high watermark, maximum tower height, and strategic location of potential telecommunications towers limits the adverse impacts to nearby properties, and provides a buffer from the ocean erodible area of environmental concern. It also meets policy O B one. A telecommunications tower would provide improved communication services in an effort to protect health, safety, and welfare of the residents and visitors to the off-road area. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the Corova sub-area maintains hundreds of previously platted lots that are not developed, and these lots continue to develop with houses. The proposed text amendment addresses a community need by allowing telecommunications towers in a limited, remote, and underserved area of the county. A thousand-foot setback from the Atlantic Ocean, mean-high tide watermark, and established maximum height will result in an orderly development pattern and is consistent with the U D O telecommunications towers purpose statement. By encouraging the location of towers in areas where the adverse impact on the community is minimal, protects the residential areas of land use from potential adverse effects of towers and antennas, encourages towers and antennas to be carefully sighted, designed, and screened to minimize their adverse impact. In addition to that, I would like to change one area just for the S F R district as far as aesthetics go, and ask that the tower be camouflaged in some way, I look like a tree, or be painted to not stick out quite as bad as a galvanized steel finish would, especially since there's no tall surroundings and no tall trees in that, in the four-by-four area. 100% opacity at 180 feet? We're going to need some tall pines.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Old business. We got, we're skipping over that. New business, board appointments. We have the A B C board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and renominate David Griggs to continue and do a second term on the A B C board as a consensus individual for us.
I'll second that appointment.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Board of Adjustment. Was that the ones?
I would like to nominate Stephen Krotick for a position for the Board of Adjustments.
And, go ahead. And I do have an appointment for the Board of Adjustments. I'd also like to nominate Lynn Hicks for the Board of Adjustments.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's unanimous. I believe Owen was the only one on tonight for a planning board, is that correct? Everybody has anything? Okay. We'll not have an appointment to that tonight. Senior Senator Advisory Board, I believe that one was mine, Cindy Scott, I'd like to move to approve her for a second term.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that is unanimous. Whalehead Stormwater Drainage Service District, I'll go ahead and tackle that one. Move to reappoint John McTeer and Sid Wilson, and add Mr. Larry Queen to the board.
Taking it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that is unanimous. Consent agenda. In the consent agenda this evening, we do have a resolution about homeowners insurance policy. For those of you that are out there looking, you know, the, there's a proposed, I believe it's 30 or 33% increase on homeowners insurance, that would particularly affect this area. The Board of Commissioners is not going to, is going to send out a resolution opposing that. We feel it would be burdensome and just, just out of character and not affordable for anyone in our county. And with that, if there's no other further questions on the consent agenda, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, carries unanimously. Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to report to the board that it's time, that time of the year again for our annual free rabies vaccine clinic, and so the Currituck County Animal Shelter, in affiliation with the Moyoc Animal Hospital, will be hosting our free rabies vaccine clinic on April 6th from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the Judicial Center. It is a free shot of vaccine for any county resident. If you have an animal that has received its original or its initial shot, if you bring proof of that, you can get the booster for free also. And if you are a non-resident, the booster is, or the vaccine is $8 a shot. And again, that's April 6th from 8:00 to 10:00.
Thanks, sir. Go ahead.
I have gotten, the number of complaints in southern and lower Currituck about the asphalt is just, it is going.
He's going to give another one. Yep. Since our last meeting.
Good job.
I'll take it.
I had an opportunity to talk to our N C D O T maintenance supervisor, and N C D O
T is putting together the spec and the bid package to do those necessary repairs to 158 where that rough course is breaking up. Don't have exactly a time of when they were going to put that out for a bid, but they are aware of that and they are moving forward to have that area repaired.
They need to start, they need to start with sweeping it up because the entire.
Sweeping it up.
Everything they put down is now loose and running around, and.
And flying into windshield.
People are losing windshields because of it.
I think the board received an email this morning, and we sent that on to the maintenance yard.
Thank you. Anything else for the county manager this evening? Okay, thank you all. At this time, I'll recess the Board of Commissioner meetings and open the special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority for Tourism Development Budget Amendments.
Mr. Chairman, you have two budget amendments before you for your consideration tonight. The first one is, just due to the sheer number of people participating in the different programs that we've been offering at the Whalehead, we need to do a budget amendment, so. So, at the end of the season, for the Wednesday's event and for the Christmas events, again, increase participation. So, you have a budget amendment to increase the supplies and service costs of providing those services or those programming for the rest of the fiscal year. The second one is a budget amendment. Unfortunately, in the last several weeks, we had a whale that has washed up on our beaches.
Twice.
And we are responsible for disposing of that, and it's not a thing that we anticipated when we put the budget together. So, you have a budget amendment in front of you to cover the cost of burying the whale, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have on either one of those.
You mean to tell me?
Does your son-in-law have a role?
And.
Burying the whale the first time? Because Willie swam back on the beach.
I just don't understand why we don't leave it out there for the summer.
So, we're actually going to dig a hole right there and bury it?
Oh, yeah, it's already done.
It is already done, but that's, yeah, it's.
You can put flowers out there.
It's a whale of a hole.
The whale of a hole.
It's a whale of a hole.
What was that?
Until you fall in it this summer. All right, thank you, sir. It's getting, it's not even late and it's getting punchy in here. Well, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Thank you. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously, and I'll entertain a motion to close the special meeting.
Make motion to close special meeting.
I'll second to close it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. And at this time, I move to enter closed session pursuant to GS 143-318-11A6 to discuss a personnel matter. Actually, I need to reopen the regular meeting, don't I? I needed to reopen our regular meeting.
Reconvene it.
Reconvene our regular meeting and move to enter closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A6 to discuss a personnel matter.